The Majority Report with Sam Seder.
The destiny of America is always safer in the hands of the people than in the conference rooms of any elite.
Sam Seder.
They are unanimous in their hate for me, and I welcome their hatred.
We must guard against the acquisition of unwarranted influence, whether sought or unsought by the military industrial complex. The Majority Report with Sam Seder.
Ah, ha, ha. Ever get the feeling you've been cheated?
It is Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. My name is Sam Seder. This is the five-time award-winning Majority Report. We are broadcasting live, steps from the industrially ravaged Gowanus Canal, the heartland of America, downtown Brooklyn, USA. On the program today, Sarah Recau, co-author of Outside Money: In School Board Elections, The Nationalization of Education Politics. Also on the program today, Epstein Could Implicate Trump Officials, and naturally, Dems in Full Retreat. Meanwhile, Bill Barr says Donald Trump can add a citizenship question to the census if he wants to. Felix Sater supposedly set to testify behind closed doors to the intelligence community today. And Tom Steyer decides to waste $100 million. Meanwhile, another billionaire candidate, Ross Perot, dies. Democrats set to subpoena Kushner and Sessions and more, and then probably do nothing. The Fifth Circuit to hear a case which could end the ACA. Democrats literally walking away from the offer to see Donald Trump's tax returns. And a federal judge quashes the rule requiring drug prices on TV. Meanwhile, the hotly contested surrogate, if you will, Dem fight in the Queens DA race heads to what will be a laborious hand recount. And Pennsylvania goes after reformer prosecutor Larry Krasner's powers. All this and more on today's program, ladies and gentlemen. Just an incredibly frustrating day already. I'm already super irritated. I don't know if that's coming across a little bit. We gotta turn the fan down in here. It's a little bit, little bit loud. But that's also, it's running in parallel with the grinding noise that is in the back of my brain right now. When I see the, just utter, there, you know, over the past six months, I think one could, at various times, make reasonable arguments that the Democrats have a strategy that favors the 2020 elections over a lot of things that they should be doing. I thought, my feeling would be that that would be at least a somewhat rational argument to make. I think it's not a particularly strong one. But it's becoming apparent that there is, to the extent that there is any strategy here, it seems to be basically, let's just go away and hope that Donald Trump and Republicans are bad enough that people vote against them. Like, let's not even forget offering some type of other vision. There, in some respects, they're doing that. The Democrats have passed 55 pieces of legislation. They're gonna pass a $15-an-hour minimum wage. Every single piece of this, these pieces of these legislation die before they get to the threshold of the Senate because Mitch McConnell knows there's no reason for him to even hold a vote on these things. In fact, it would be stupid for him to hold a vote on these things. Why go on the record as being against them? Two or three weeks ago, Sherry Bustos, the head of the DCCC, presumably one of the key architects of this strategy, was bemoaning the fact that voters don't seem to be paying attention to anything they're doing. And of course, when you make that assessment, right? What they say is like, you know, awareness of the problem is 50% of the solution. Apparently, it's about 5% of the solution. Because the Democrats seem to be, and by the Democrats, I'm talking about the leadership of the Democratic Party in the form of Chuck Schumer and Nancy Pelosi. And maybe it's more Chuck Schumer's fault. May, I, I mean, it's, it's hard to make that argument when you see that not only are they not pursuing impeachment, they are not pursuing the low-hanging fruit of just basic oversight. They're not even pursuing rhetorical oversight. Yesterday, Andrew Cuomo signed a bill that allowed for the Ways and Means Committee, as dictated by the chairman of that committee, to see the taxes of any individual it wants in New York State. In other words, if you want to see Donald Trump's state taxes, you can see them. You won't have the federal taxes, but it's gonna give you a very good notion of what's in there, broadly speaking. And Richard Neal's response was, "No, thank you." He waited months to file a lawsuit to get them out of a federal court after Mnuchin said no. Waited months to ask, and then waited to file the lawsuit. And then, when given the, basically given the taxes, he says, "Ah, I know it's in that envelope, not gonna open it." When the Miami Herald does a story that implicates Alex Acosta, and then is subsequently found to have basically broken the law, Alex Acosta as a US attorney, in the way that he made a sweetheart plea deal for a guy who's running basically a child prostitution ring. One would think that as the sitting Secretary of Labor, the Democrats might say, "Hey, that's a bad guy. You're a bad guy for letting a pedophile just seemingly walk away, and also letting off his co-conspirators who apparently had to serve no time." Remember, he served time in a county jail. I imagine, if you're a billionaire, you can make county jail pretty, pretty cush. And I think he got to go out six days a week.
Yeah, he was able to work every day.
And I imagine that must have been some hard work he was doing at his home office. And when asked yesterday, "Do you have any comments regarding Alex Acosta of Democrats, including Chuck Schumer, who is the leader of the Senate, who opposed Acosta?" Now that Jeffrey Epstein has been indicted in, by the feds in New York, are you going to say anything about it? No. That might draw attention to him in some fashion. Here's the question. When Bill Barr tells Donald Trump, "You can go and put, and change this question on the census," even after the Supreme Court has said you cannot, and if Donald Trump does it, what are the Democrats gonna do? How do you let this stand? How do you let, like, what is left? This is a real problem, because they seem to be hell-bent. I mean, there's one thing with like, okay, the circumstances six months ago, it looks like we shouldn't impeach. We shouldn't impeach. The Mueller report comes out, it doesn't, Bill Barr did a great job of spinning this thing beforehand, we shouldn't impeach. Oh, they're completely obstructing every single reasonable ask for us to fulfill our oversight function. We shouldn't impeach. Oh, the Secretary of Labor was involved in some type of large cover-up that could very well implicate the President. Incidentally, we may take some time to go into this, but y'all remember, there was a woman who filed a lawsuit against Donald Trump in California claiming that she was sexually assaulted by him in Epstein's house. She refiled in New York in the run-up to the election, and then was supposedly intimidated away. But she names people who apparently are also named in the Epstein scandal. Now, maybe she did some research, and she's absolutely crazy, and decided to do this. That's, I mean, I suppose stranger things have happened. But Occam's razor would suggest that, eh, maybe actually there's a problem here. Maybe there were co-conspirators involved. And where are the Democrats on this? We're just, we're not even, it's not even a question of being on the sidelines. They're leaving the stadium. They're leaving the state. They seem to want to go into a different time zone, completely backing into this stuff, looking at what they're doing, seeing it's not working, and then doing absolutely nothing about it. Absolutely nothing. Like, at what threshold? I mean, it really is honestly as if they've dug in so much now that there is nothing that this administration could do that would cause them to exercise oversight in a meaningful way. They have apparently this concept of oversight overreach. What it's based upon, I have no idea. Because we had, was it seven different investigations into Benghazi? Maybe it's more. I don't know. Millions upon millions of dollars. When was the last time a Republican said the words Benghazi? The only thing that came out of Benghazi, of all of it, there were 10, 10 different, unique investigations into what happened in Benghazi. Can anybody remember what the inciting incident was in this? It was, there was an attack on what turned out to be, well, was theoretically a, the embassy annex in Benghazi. The first assessment of this attack was that it was a part of a protest that was going on in the Arab world to a video that had been released about Mohammed. This was going on in about, if I recall, on that day, in seven or eight different locations, some places where these places were overrun, where embassies were, people broke through some of the compounds. I remember this distinctly because I think I was doing, I was hosting Chris Hayes's weekend program that, and I remember the graphic of the different, like, little dots on there when this was indicating, when was happening. And because the State Department thought it was part of the video, they didn't send people in. I think it's also quite possible that it was CIA-affiliated, that there may have been a weapons cache there, cache. And so they weren't, so the government wasn't, the US government wasn't fully transparent about what was, why that place may have been attacked. Regardless, 10 different investigations, one material thing came out of these investigations. One material thing. That Hillary Clinton had a private email server, which, as you know, ended up implicating the 2016 election, depending on who you talked to, significantly or quite significantly. That is what the Comey letter was all about. So, and, and recall, if you, if you can find a single person who said they voted against Republicans in 2016 or 2018 because of the Benghazi overreach, I would like to meet that person. If you could find anybody, the most partisan Democrat, who will list the Benghazi oversight overreach as the top five reasons why they don't like Republicans today, without any prompting, I will send you, I don't know, sticker, or I don't know, what do we got over there? I see some bolts. I don't know.
Got lots of books.
Send him a book.
We'll sign it.
There you go.
But I need, I, no, don't rig it. The point being that what the Democrats are doing are completely, it's completely without any foundation in the real world. And it, it is a total failure of leadership. It's not even a skittish leadership. It's not even a terribly lacking in imagination strategy. It's just complete and utter abdication of any role in our government. It is both political malfeasance and just governmental malfeasance. Like, you need to serve your role as oversight. It just so happens that there's probably a huge boon politically involved in that. But nothing. I mean, it's, it's stunning.
Well, that was very inspiring. Can I ask you a question, however, Sam? Do we have a moment, or do you need to riff more?
Well, go ahead.
Are you gonna continue to tell me how to do my job? Have you talked to anybody recently about their experience with Invisalign treatments?
I have not.
You have not, have you? Well, I could tell you that there were a lot of good, common-sense middle-class Americans who aren't obsessed with partisan warfare, or child sex trafficking, or whatever goes on in your head, who are quite upset that they think they're gonna have a hassle-free path to a perfect smile, and they are not getting that return. That's the kind of common sense, everyday American thing that we're gonna continue to work on in the Senate. And if you don't like that, and you're leftist partisan extremists broadcast, and there's nothing I can do to help you. Oh, I'm sorry, my wife saw the other line. Apparently, there's a parking space by the Brooklyn Public Library she doesn't like.
I'm going to, honestly, like, like, I, you know, and then, I'm not even talking about Tom Steyer yet. I, it's like, I...
It's too much to take on at once.
No kidding. Like, honestly, like, all I can think of is, like, I just wanna take a hammer over there and just, like, just pound it on my hand till this feeling goes away. It's so, so frustrating.
Literally millions of places the guy could put his money more effectively.
Tom Steyer? Oh, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. I mean, I, we'll get into that later. Folks, let me just try and regain my composure here by telling you about Capterra. This is, this is one of those, this is what, this is what I would call a Capterra moment for me. This is when I start to scroll through their huge assortment of reviews on different business software and contemplate, what other business could I go into that will not make me this angry? As you know, whether you're trying to get a sweet deal on something, or you're looking for a restaurant, whatever it is, you go to a review site, right? Well, why should be looking for a, the right software for your business be any different? You can read thousands of real software reviews and find the right software at your business, for your business at capterra.com/majority, where, that exists for, I don't, 700 specific categories of business software, and then gives reviews for them. So, there's 700, I don't know how many different ones are each one, but I mean, like, thousands of pieces of software that are reviewed. 850,000 reviews of products from real software users, from project management to email marketing, has everything you need to make an informed decision fast. Millions of people use Capterra each month to find the right tools for their business. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna scroll through, I'm gonna, bakery software. Maybe I could go and own a bakery.
That would make you more calm.
More calm. God damn it, where are the croissants?
That's good self-insight right there.
There you go, exactly. Claims processing software, class registration software, clinical trial management software, I'm just in the Cs. Let me scroll down to the Fs, financial reporting software, financial risk software, fire department software, fitness software, fleet maintenance software, food service distribution, forestry software. I think that would be actually good for me. Go and work in some type of forestry service. Gamification software, gamification software. Hmm, maybe we could do that with government software, GPS tracking software, gradebook software. Scroll all the way down here to Ws, warehouse management, website builder, wireless expense management software, workforce management, worship software. You can go there and just, basically looking for a new job, just go there and side by looking at all the different software. You can visit capterra.com/majority for free today to find the tools that make an informed software decision for your business. Capterra.com/majority. That's capterra, C-A-P-T-E-R-R-A dot com slash majority. Capterra, software selection, totally simplified. All right, we didn't even get to that story of this, this guy. Do we have time for it, or should, no? Okay, we're gonna go take a quick break and talk to Sarah Recau on how money is influencing school board elections.
Oh, that's fascinating. This is Tom Steyer.
Yeah.
Great topic.
Nationalizing education politics, honestly. We'll be right back. We are back. Sam Seder on The Majority Report. On the phone, it's a pleasure to welcome to the program Associate Professor in the Department of Political Science at Michigan State University, awarded a fellowship from the Radcliffe Institute for Advanced Study in 2018, 2019, and co-author with Jeffrey Henig and Rebecca Jacobson of Outside Money: In School Board Elections, The Nationalization of Education Politics. Sarah Recau, welcome to the program.
Thanks very much for having me.
So, just, you looked at five cities, is that right, to, to do this study?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, tell us the five cities.
The five cities are Denver, Los Angeles, New Orleans, Indianapolis, and Bridgeport, Connecticut.
And, and, and why, why those cities?
So, we were interested in understanding that, something we'd been reading about in the news a bit, that there were big donors that lived out of state who were giving money to school board candidates, which seemed unusual, given what we know about school board elections being kind of low-profile backburner events, not, not a big presidential or congressional election. And so, we wanted to understand it deeply, to look at the full scope of campaign contributions in these elections, look at the candidates. So, we picked five cities where we knew there had been some news coverage of this phenomenon. This is out of a potential set of cases of about 43, mostly larger localities, where we were able to identify media coverage on this type of activity. But then, we went really deep to, to get a picture of what was, what was going on.
And when did you start this project, and what was the, what was the, what were the years in which you were looking at the data sets, I guess?
Sure. So, the data that we gathered covers election cycles from 2008 to 2014 across the five cities. And that includes all the campaign contributions we could possibly get our hands on. Everything that was reported in campaign finance reports. So, this doesn't just include money that goes to candidates, but includes money to independent expenditure committees and PACs. What, you know, has gone on more recently, where 501(c)(4) have become a bigger factor in some campaigns, was not as much of an issue during the time period we were looking at. That tends to be less transparent money. But we gathered union contributions, various types of reform organizations, money from individuals, and then we, all total, we had more than 18,000 campaign contributions in our data set from that time period.
And when did you start this, when did this research start and end? Not when it covered, but when did you actually, when did the three of you actually?
Oh, when did we conduct the research?
Exactly.
So, the book just came out this spring, and we conducted most of the research roughly in the, like, would be about 2016, 2017 timeframe. So, but prior to that, we started collecting the data earlier, and then we were interviewing candidates, we wrote up an article, and then, and then we wrote the book. So, our interviews were also a big part of that process, interviewing candidates in all five of the cities that were part of the study.
So, when you start in 2008, in terms of what you're looking at, is the phenomena that you're, that you're, that you're finding here, is it, has it begun? Is it, where is it in the, sort of, the, the course of its life, I guess?
Yeah. So, in 2008, there was very little going on, and that, that was sort of helpful for us to get a sense of, of change. Indianapolis is a particularly striking case of this, where you Um, in Indianapolis is a particularly striking case of this, where you look back at their 2000, uh, you know, the, the earliest election we have in our data for them. And there's, it, it would be what I think people would think of as a typical school board election. Not a lot of money, uh, most of it being contributed from local people, um, who live in Indianapolis or surrounding communities. Um, and then that changes quite a bit, um, especially by the time you get to 2012 in Indianapolis. Um, much higher sums, um, raised by candidates, much more expensive. And these donors who live outside of the state of Indiana, um, who are contributing money. Um, really, the only city in our cases that, um, you might say always had expensive school board elections was Los Angeles. And that's not that surprising. Los Angeles is the second largest school district in the country. The school board, uh, districts that candidates run in are larger than congressional districts. It's a huge and expensive media market. So it's a, it's a different, uh, kind of beast compared to the other, uh, four. Um, where you can really see a change, um, that, that kind of comes after about 2010 or 2011, when the money starts to grow quite a bit.
Okay, and I, I want to talk about that comparison between the, sort of the smaller towns and, and LA in terms of this context, but, but, but in, in a bit. So, so tell us, like, who are, when this new money's coming in during, um, really, over the course of the first term of the Obama administration, I guess?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because presumably, this money doesn't just show up, uh, somebody decides like, oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contribute to, uh, you know, some random school board, uh, races, uh, this cycle. There has to be sort of, there's ideas, there's, uh, organizations, right? There's, uh, the, you know, we start to generate targets. So, um, who are the donors that are giving this money that are developing through this time? And how much do you know about their, their process in assessing who they're going to contribute to?
Right. So, um, and one interesting example, just to feature one individual, is John Arnold. Um, he is, uh, based in Houston. Um, he's a billionaire. Um, he made his money in energy investing, started out at Enron, became, started a hedge fund focused on energy. Um, in our data set, um, we have a total of $63,400 in school board contributions, um, from John Arnold that went to candidates and committees in school board elections in Denver, Los Angeles, and New Orleans. And of course, he lives in Texas, right? So he doesn't live in, in any of the states or cities, um, in our study. So what else do we know about John Arnold? Well, John Arnold, along with his wife Laura Arnold, um, they've started a philanthropy. Um, part of their philanthropic work has focused on education. Um, and so he has, in addition to his, uh, finance career, has been involved as an education philanthropist. And so what we did, once we identified a group of people like John Arnold, um, which we, the way we defined them was people who had given at least a thousand dollars in a single election cycle, which may not sound like a lot, but in school board elections, that actually is quite a bit.
Can you, can I just stop you there?
Mm-hmm.
Give us a sense of how much that is, I mean, relatively speaking, because when I hear you tell me a billionaire gave $63,000, that's literally like me going out and, I'm gonna buy a sandwich today. I'm gonna, instead of just my hard boiled egg for lunch, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buy a full on sandwich, uh, maybe even less, actually. I, I mean, uh, but, but, but to the recipient, like, what is, like, in a typical race, I guess, for the school board in all these places, how much money is generally spent?
Right. So, um, it, there's, there's been some studies of this. Um, one from, uh, you know, based on elections from 2010, you have a, a study showing that less than 3% of candidates for school board report spending more than $25,000. So we're talking about elections where, um, your total fundraising take could be thousands of dollars or tens of thousands of dollars. Um, but certainly not hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um, and so what we get with these large donors is that even though to them, absolutely, as a billionaire, this is not a huge amount of money at all, right? Um, but for the campaigns that they're giving to, so for instance, the 132 people we identify as these large out of state national donors, um, there are 132 of them out of more than 8,000 individual donors in our data set. And those 132 people gave 18% of the funds, um, that went to, uh, the candidates who were basically, uh, we also looked at the candidates' positions, they were overwhelmingly aligned with, like, educational reform, sort of chart, pro charter school and, and the like, um, in local elections. They also gave, they gave 51% of the funds that went to reform aligned PAC and independent expenditure committees. So where their, their influence is really outsized is in these, um, independent expenditure committee type groups. Um, I think what partly explains that is the fact that candidates tend to be more subject to campaign finance limitations in the local elections. Whereas these, um, other groups can raise unlimited funds, you can write a really large check.
I see. So it's really, it's all relative, uh, when we're talking about from the candidate's perspective because, because they're capped anyways. So if you get somebody to give you a thousand dollars in a race in, um, I don't, I don't know, uh, in Bridgeport, Connecticut to, to be on the school board, you've done 10% of your fundraising, essentially. Right? I mean, that's basically what it comes down to.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you, you raise, you know, for, and, and I, you know, it's important to add something from the candidate's perspective here that we learned, you know, from the interviews and some of the, that kind of more case study work, is that in, in large part, they're not seeking, directly seeking these contributions. They don't know these billionaires. Um, so instead, what's going on is there's more of an intermediary role with, with some groups that we haven't talked about yet, like Democrats for Education Reform, Stand for Children, that put kind of on the radar of, uh, of people like John Arnold, the fact that there's an interesting school board race in Denver. And these are some candidates aligned with the kinds of policy positions that these, um, wealthy folks, um, would, would probably support. Um, so the candidates themselves are kind of, I mean, we had some funny quotes from candidates where they kind of said, wow, I, I didn't know that, you know, Reed Hastings, uh, you know, who's like CEO of Netflix is gonna write me a check. That was interesting. Um, so, and they have, you know, there's no personal contact really to speak of between the, the billionaire donors and the, and the local candidates.
So really, what we're talking about is you have billionaires sitting from a distance with these intermediaries, these organizations that are looking to, to push corporate reform in education, including charters. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about the implications of this. Uh, basically saying, uh, give us some fertilizer. We know, um, which candidates we're basically going to, we're just gonna provide them with fertilizer. And, uh, their, their opponents will not have that fertilizer and that's what will tip the scales here. This isn't a question where you have to go in and buy a candidate. The candidates already exist. We're just, we have isolated which ones are in favor of corporatized, you know, of corporate reform, of all that agenda, and which ones are not. And we're just gonna put our thumbs on the scale is basically what the calculation is.
Yeah. So the, the intermediary groups are the ones who, who play the, more of the role in, in identifying the candidates. Um, it's important to point out, though, the, some of the other money that's part of this, um, in, in a couple of ways. I mean, first of all, we do show that in these, in these five cities, the, uh, the candidates whose positions align more with education reform, with charter schools or teacher evaluation and things of that nature. Basically, we looked at positions that kind of aligned with the Race to the Top program of the Obama administration as our index for reform policies. And, um, they, they out, they raised more money. Um, and, but they also raised more money locally. So there was kind of an interesting thing going on here of not just the outside national money really raising, uh, how much spending was going on in these elections, but it also activated local donors. Some of those donors also being, uh, kind of the more elite or, uh, business-aligned groups in, within those specific cities. And then we also have teacher union money in these cities, which varies a great deal. Um, so in Los Angeles, there's quite a bit more teacher union money. But in other places like New Orleans, where, you know, we have a whole long story, uh, post Katrina there. Um, and a very weak situation for teachers' unions, so not very much union money there. So we look at the variation in that, um, and the relative level of spending of each of these groups across the cities.
Um, I, I want to ask, you know, to what extent that money ended up translating into, um, into victories, I guess. But before I do, in terms of that dynamic between the local and national money, were you able to determine how much of that local money was motivated by the national money? Insofar as, uh, if I am with the local, you know, I, I'm, I'm a local guy and, um, but I've, I have a similar mentality to the corporate reformers. I don't like unions. I, um, I think there should be more, uh, private schools. I think we, you know, too much money for public education. I'm pissed about my tax dollars going into, uh, my, my property tax, whatever it is. That can motivate me to, uh, contribute. But also, seeing that a candidate that I may support has already raised X number of dollars or is able to throw a fundraiser that they couldn't have but for the national dollars that come in, that may enhance my willingness to give. Was there any way to sort of measure that dynamic? Like, how?
Yeah. I, I mean, you're asking a great question. It's one of these, uh, things, you know, coming from the perspective of a social scientist. You wish you could disentangle all the, all the possible causal factors here. I mean, because we observe a lot of, a lot of things going on that could possibly explain this. So, one thing we find is that these candidates tend to get more, the candidates raising the outside money are also having more professionalized campaigns. So they're able to hire consultants they might not otherwise, or fundraising professionals. So absolutely, you would expect that that could go along with a more effective local fundraising operation. You're also looking at competition, right? So my potential opponent is raising money, I raise more money, the opponent raises more, right? These things interact with one another, um, in a, in a competitive election. And there's just the basic issue of how low profile school board elections, um, traditionally have been. And in many cases, were, in the, in the very cities we look at, I'd say with the big, you know, with LA being more exceptional. But in, in Indianapolis or Bridgeport, you're talking about elections where we couldn't even find news coverage on some of the electoral cycles at the early part of our, of our timeframe. I mean, that's how low profile these were. Very low voter turnout. I mean, kind of pathetic from the standpoint of what you would like to see in, you know, a more vibrant, local, uh, democracy. Um, and so simply making the fact that people are aware there's a school board election going on, the names of the candidates, um, things of that nature, right? Money, uh, does help fuel that process of, of attention, um, on, on an election. And so that, that would also go with that outcome.
Uh, can you, uh, were you able to determine beyond the, the sheer dollars that were raised, uh, by these donors? Like, what was, could you assess how many more people got elected? Like, what outcome it actually had on the elections?
So we looked at the outcomes. Um, so the reform-backed candidates in our cities won two and a half times more often than they lost. Um, so they had a pretty high rate of success. The union-backed candidates were 50/50. Um, and alongside that, though, is the fact that the, um, you, you had more money going to reform-backed candidates. So, um, kind of more, there, there was lower efficiency for the reform dollars, if that makes sense, right? There, there was more reform money that got, wound up being spent on candidates who actually lost their elections. Um, and unions were somewhat more efficient in how they distributed their money, even though they have a lower, uh, kind of success rate of the candidates.
That doesn't really tell you, that doesn't really tell you that much.
No.
Other than, I mean, it's quite possible, that there was enough money that we can bet on, you know, um, a candidate that has only 30% chance of odds of winning, as opposed to just reserve all our money for candidates that have a 60% chance of winning.
Ah, yeah. And, and I mean, there's all kinds of questions to ask here about strategy. Um, and, I mean, unions tend to have more of the kind of local knowledge on the ground about candidates, um, and, um.
So in other words, two and a half times, to have two and a half times, um, of a, of a cohort win their elections as a function of that they're receiving a specific type of money, that's a significant.
Oh, yeah, it's huge. Absolutely. And I mean, we've seen, you know, we've seen sort of the school boards in a couple of these cities. Um, Los Angeles and Denver being the most prominent, um, kind of, uh, become more solidly, uh, with a, with a slate of candidates who, at least in the eyes of the people who endorse them, would, would have been considered pro-reform. I would, part of, though, part, I mean, we can talk more about this, but part of our, our, our findings in our book and from interviewing the candidates is that there's a little bit of a difference between the way the national groups try to label everyone as pro, pro-reform or pro-union or what have you, and then the way the candidates at the local level describe their positions, which can be more nuanced. And so I think some of the polarization in these elections is actually coming from this national pressure. And the, to say that the school board suddenly flipped to pro-reform or something, I don't think is an accurate statement of what polit, what kind of policymaking is actually going on in these boards, but.
So, okay, well, let's, well, let's talk about what, what the, what these pro-reform, so-called reform, uh, outfits were looking to, to get. When they, you know, and, and obviously, it's not just, we want the people, I mean, I don't want to get too sort of like cynical or granular about this, but, um, I'm sure some of these organizations, all they concerned about was they win the elections and they can go back and get more money from these billionaires. But putting that aside, there is obviously an agenda that they have. We want more charters. We want, uh, vouchers. We want, um, and, and, you know, you can tell me, uh, what, what their agenda items were. And then to see how much of an actual impact it had in changing policy on the ground.
Yeah. So, so charter schools are probably the most key issue, um, that we see across the districts. Um, and, and particularly, so if you look at Los Angeles and Denver, um, there's been, you know, long, a long ongoing expansion of charter schools in those cities. But in, especially, like, why focus on a local school board election? These are also cities where the local school board is, it plays the most powerful role in authorizing charter schools. Right? So the, the locus of decision-making is with the local school board. So why this might not happen in other places is in, like, in a state, other states, Michigan being one of them, um, you have other entities authorizing charter schools. And so it wouldn't make sense to put all your eggs into the basket of a, of a local school board election, because that's not really where the decision-making happens.
In Michigan, it's, it's, it's the state essentially that, that provides the check.
Universities are actually the largest authorizers in Michigan.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a, that's a whole other conversation. But, um, uh, yeah. So, so that's part of what's happening here is the, you know, you see this happening in some of the places where the local school board plays that really important role in charter school authorization. Um, and then you have.
And can I just, I'm sorry, I just, I presume that, uh, you could write another book about what's happening on the state level? I mean, in those states where, that, that there's, that these same entities that are, um, you know, sort of providing the, uh, the conduit to this money and to the right candidates there, are probably also have a plan for places like Michigan or Massachusetts or wherever it is, right? I mean.
Yeah. You can talk to me in a few months. I'm working, uh, with a colleague, Leslie Finger, on a paper on state elections.
Okay. All right. I mean, just so that people understand that this is a, this is a big project. Um, and, uh, so, so give us a sense of, in these, um, these, these school boards, like, did they, they got it? They, they got their money's worth, it seems, or at least, you know, I don't know if a billionaire really says like, ugh, I wasted 30. at least, you know, I don't know if a billionaire really says like, oh, I wasted $30,000. Maybe they do. I don't know. Uh, but they, uh, to the extent that they got two and a half times more candidates elected, um, than those who didn't receive the funding, did they, did they get similar types of results in terms of policy? And what, what did that look like?
So this is where I think the story gets, uh, gets complicated or where I would, I would say you've got to look at the specific cases to, to kind of see it play out. So I'll give a few examples. So one example is Bridgeport, um, which we haven't really talked about, a small city in our, in our study. First of all, Bridgeport was less a story about charter schools and more an issue about, um, mayoral control of the schools. So our, our kind of reform coalition there was trying to get mayoral control of the schools. And there was a ballot initiative on this. In that case, the reform side lost. Um, and what you had there was basically it, after that, there, the high spending in elections really dropped off, it kind of fizzled away. Okay. So there's one example. Another example is New Orleans, um, where you've had, um, a fair amount of money come in, especially the 2012 election and, um, Sarah Newell Ouzden, who is very involved in, in reform there and starting, you know, New Schools for New Orleans organization. And in, in that case, where especially with a, a weak, uh, union situation, they kind of spent a lot of money in 2012 and have kind of been able to just hold on to that coalition without having to kind of compete a lot. Um, so in a, in a place where your, your, your money is the main money, um, that, that can, you know, kind of sustain itself. And then I want to focus on Los Angeles, which is just, I think, a lot murkier when you look at the long-term story there. So what's gone on in Los Angeles, if you go back to say 2009, was a situation where the, the school board was seen as not entirely sort of pro-charter or pro-reform. And there were a series of, uh, candidates who raised money, especially to run against Steve Zimmer, um, who was a member of the school board who was not seen as being as pro-charter. Um, and so they had people who were considered pro-charter, who were supposed to try to defeat him, but lost. And, but during that time period, the Los Angeles school board was continuously authorizing charter schools. And if you look year after year after year, the number of charter schools in LA Unified is growing, right? Even in the context of a school board that maybe Eli Broad would not have, you know, one of the billionaires, one of the people who's giving a lot of money, um, would have not considered it to be a pro-reform board. But they're authorizing charter schools, right? This, this agenda is moving along. So then what happens is in 2017, you have the most expensive school board election ever in Los Angeles. And a board is elected that is viewed to be, okay, now we have a pro-reform majority on this board. Here we go. Elected, Steve Zimmer loses. Here we are. Well, then what happens, this, you know, just a few months ago, um, Los Angeles teachers went on strike. And shortly after the strike, partly as a condition in resolving the strike, the school board actually, it was a symbolic vote, but votes on a charter school moratorium. And this theoretically pro-charter reform board passed this symbolic charter school moratorium. So in that regard, it's not clear to me that saying a board is or isn't pro, you know, a majority reform is not really, is not really getting you enough information about what's going on in local politics. Um, both in the sense that unions have other sources of power besides, you know, money and elections. Um, and that a lot of these reforms, like authorizing charter schools can proceed even when there are people on the board who are not as fully embracing charter schools as maybe the, the billionaire donors, you know, are trying to, to, you know, the kinds of people they are tending to support in these elections.
Um, so it's, 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 I guess the, the, the bottom line is, is that to the extent that you can out, you can influence the outcome of this from the outside, they've been able to do that. Uh, but, but it's not necessarily a one-to-one relationship.
No, not at all. And, and I, so I think, you know, it's both, on the one hand, it's, it, it might be more influential in a, in a situation where the local, you know, whether it's union or other local bases of power are just weaker. Um, but on the other hand, it's, it's a long game, right? Politics is a long game. It's not just won and lost in elections. And so to the degree we're talking about campaign money as one focus, yes, it's, 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 it can be a, a one potential factor in deciding who gets on the board. But the kinds of decisions those people end up making and the kinds of political calculus they have to have in response to a teacher's strike or other, you know, a budget crisis or other things that might emerge, um, they can make different kinds of decisions, right? And those donors are gone, right? They're not paying attention, um, you know, so much anymore. So, um, I think what we, we've tried to emphasize is the fact that local governing is definitely more than these elections.
And so, um, and so, you know, as, as we wrap it up, what is the, what is the lesson here? Is, I mean, and, and, uh, you know, one of them clearly, and just so happens today, Tom Steyer decided to, uh, jump into the race as president and he's committed supposedly a hundred million dollars of his own money. Um, one of the things that seems pretty clear is that if Tom Steyer, uh, wanted to turn every single school board, uh, election in this country, he probably could on some level, if he was willing to expend that money, among other races, I would imagine. But what, um, what is the, what, what ultimately happens here? We've, you know, I mean, cause it, it, it sort of feels like the national fight over education reform, in some ways has, um, either been resolved or is in root to being resolved. Like you have the, uh, the Gates Foundation, which I guess it was a year, maybe less than a year ago in December, basically announced through their RAN study that, hey, we made a mistake. We were wrong. Uh, we shouldn't have spent all that money. And, um, you have folks like Arnie Duncan now and, and that's sort of that whole regime that brought race to the top, to the fore, seems largely discredited. The, the national teachers unions anyways seem to sort of, um, be a lot more sensitive to getting in on the ground floor of these campaigns so that they can avoid, uh, another such debacle. What, what's your sense of, of that? And sort of like the, the long-term sort of lessons that come out of what you found?
Sure. So, um, to, to speak to kind of the, the interaction between the money we see in these elections and, and national politics, um, the large, the, most of the large national donors that we looked at were, we looked at their federal giving also, um, the majority were Democrats. Um, and so it does speak to that, uh, that kind of what has, especially, you know, looking at the Obama administration era, a, a division within the Democratic Party about, um, about educational reform. And yes, that's clearly gone on the back burner, um, during the Trump administration and with, with Betsy DeVos as Secretary of Education. I don't believe that it's gone away, right? So I don't, I don't believe that the, that the, the same individuals have, uh, changed their position on charter schools, for instance. But they are staying quiet, right? They, they have definitely uh, maybe have other priorities, uh, related to national politics that are, that is causing them to keep their charter positions on the back burner, uh, for the time being. And, you know, we'll have to wait and see what happens, um, amongst the Democratic presidential candidates in the, in these varied factions in the Democratic Party going forward. Um, as far as sort of billionaires and politics, absolutely. These, these kinds of local elections kind of are low hanging fruit because they're, they're such low dollar elections traditionally. And so, you know, to the degree, um, interested individuals were to think, hi, I could spend a lot of money and become, you know, what, you know, it's, your money goes a lot farther uh, in these races than it would in a congressional election or certainly than a presidential election. Um, and so that's kind of an interesting dynamic here and something we were, we were really able to observe going on in these races is how, how much, you know, money from a very small number of people became a very large proportion of the resources being spent. Um, and then finally, I think another take-home message is just, so on the one hand, there's that, right? There's sort of the potential low hanging fruit for very wealthy people if they were to think local elections were, were where they wanted to have influence. On the flip side though, for the sort of, you have someone, uh, who, who cares about local school politics and maybe is concerned about, about what outside money entails, is, you know, we could all do better to pay more attention to our local elections. So, you know, part of what makes this low hanging fruit is the fact that these elections are low profile. There's so little media coverage. There's so little attention. There's such low voter turnout. And frankly, that's because people aren't paying attention to them. Um, and so we could all do a bit better by, by making it something that is a focus. Important decisions are being made by these school boards. Um, but a lot of people are so focused on the national level that we lose track of these elections.
Sarah Recout, the book is Outside Money and School Board Elections: The Nationalization of Education Politics. Uh, look forward to that piece on the States. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thanks for having me.
All right, folks. We're gonna take a, uh, quick break, head into the fun half. Well, let's do this thing, the, the, let's do this, uh, this, that clip that we were gonna play at the top of the show. We didn't get to because I get so annoyed. But I mean, just that, speaking of annoyed, Tom Steyer, I mean, I don't know where he is on education. I can't imagine it's, um, well, I have no idea. But what this guy could do with a hundred million dollars, my God. But we will, we'll talk more about that later. Meanwhile, Fox News wants you to know that just because Donald Trump is not trying to cut social security at the moment, uh, that that day will come and that it's super important for them to continue to remind their, uh, their viewers that, um, that social security is, is gonna go bankrupt even though it's not. And that, um, the 401K plans, the fact that they're a failed experiment, not that relevant. How do you deal with these realities? How do you, how do you basically try and make people feel comfortable with the notion that it may be difficult for them to retire? Offer solutions? Or there's maybe another way?
Well, retirement inching closer to becoming a thing in the past for a lot of Americans. In fact, a recent poll finds nearly one in four people don't expect to ever leave the workforce. This as the number of people working multiple jobs also spiking. So why are so many people financially unfit to call it quits? Well, it's up for debate. So let's ask Trend Micro CIO Donald Luston. Uh, you know, these kind of polls are always, always around, right? Uh, Bankrate does some things and other folks, but it's always alarming. Thirty-two percent of people say they over, they retired before 865, which might be unrealistic. But 23% said never. Is that worrisome for you, Donald?
It doesn't worry me personally. I, I guess I'm one of those people who plans never to retire. I mean, I, I gotta tell you, what do people do when they retire? You know, how do you spend a day? I mean, is bowling that interesting? Is fishing that interesting? I mean, I, I happen to love my work. Why do I want to stop it? You know, it's not like it hurts. Why would I stop it? This is great. What a great country where we have the opportunity to keep working. What a miracle where our lives are long enough and we're healthy enough and mentally alert enough so that we don't have to retire like generations before us. This is a great blessing. You should embrace it.
What's amazing is they are literally showing B-roll alongside this guy of just about every job that you could have where it actually literally does hurt, right? Like, hey, I'm working construction. I got news for you. Your body gives out in construction. You, if you can make it to 65 after a, a lifetime of construction, then you are super, super lucky.
Especially if you have all your fingers.
Well, your fingers, but I mean, never mind workplace injuries. It's just.
Back, knees, it's just brutal.
Waiting tables, working in factories.
Every single piece of B-roll were things that were absolutely physical. They should have gotten B-roll of people getting, uh, taken in a town car to a TV hit.
Right.
People sitting on their ass at a hedge fund, people getting a massive check from the Koch brothers.
People yelling at their assistants.
People yelling at their assistants to type faster as they dictate an Ayn Rand masturbatory fantasy.
This is, I mean, honestly though, this is the sort of the, the perfect example of the last refuge, right? Where they go like, the question is, why, why are so many people worried about the, you know, or, 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 you know, why can't we, uh, we, we manage to have, um, a perfect retirement? And this guy responds with, why can't we have, why would we want it?
Let's stick outside the box.
Yeah, exactly. Folks, you don't need it. You just don't need it. Look at me. I'm doing great. Why would you need to retire?
I'm on TV right now. Why would you want to not wait tables when you're 85? Think about it.
Oh my gosh. It's a blessing. You are lucky.
I've listed a couple of activities that are really fun and rewarding to people. Let me add a few others. Who wants to spend more time with their family?
Exactly.
Families are a burden. My ex-wife's a total bitch as an example.
Uh, this is, uh, Luston's, um, John Galt, this is a guy who does like these ads on Fox, uh, and who is, um, he is going to let you into the secret, here, play a little bit of this.
Why is Ayn Rand's great novel Atlas Shrugged a bestseller today, more than half a century after it was written? It's because our real world today is just like the fictional future that Rand foresaw in Atlas Shrugged.
Oh God.
It's a time of crisis and decay, but it's also a world of innovation and achievement. It's a world of heroes and villains driven by very different philosophies. We wrote I Am John Galt to tell their stories. We look at the heroic innovators who are building our world and show that they're doing it just like the heroes of Ayn Rand's novels. They're using her philosophy of capitalism, reason, objective reality, and self-interest. Who is John Galt? Meet John Allison, the mild-mannered southerner who created one of America's greatest banking empires. He did it with Ayn Rand's philosophy by getting every one of his tens of thousands of employees to read Atlas Shrugged and live by its code. In the great financial crisis of 2008, his bank was about the only one that didn't need a government bailout. But the government forced Allison to take TARP money anyway. After that, Allison walked away, just like John Galt did. There's so many other Rand heroes in our midst. There's Bill Gates, the genius who built the world's greatest company.
Allison was also, uh, the former CEO, president of the Cato Institute. Um, and I, I, I would love, we should look into John Allison.
Can you just, can we, I love the individualistic focus of forcing all of your employees to read a cult book.
And guess what?
It's a super individualistic.
You don't need to, we don't need to contribute to your 401K because you don't want to retire anyways, guys. What are you gonna do?
The world is very similar to the time of John Galt in the sense that there's, in addition to pillaging and destroying the country, CEOs still need to have some delusional Russian author with no writing capacity tell them that they're like Che Guevara, or like operating a bank. They need to be flattered on top of everything else. That's, that is the incredible thing about Ayn Rand. It's like the actual economics of it makes sense if you are an oligarch, but the heroism of it shows that all of them secretly want to think of themselves as swashbuckling revolutionaries.
That's the whole reactionary notion, right?
Which is why it's so funny.
I mean, that's the whole notion of like the IDW and the fair, uh, the free market Fonzie. I mean, all of it, all of it.
Free market Fonzie.
Uh, folks, reminder, Capterra is the leading free, totally free online resource to help you find the best software solution for your business with over five, 850,000 reviews. Products from real software users, more than 700 specific categories of software. It has everything you need to make an informed decision fast. Visit capterra.com/majority today for free to make an informed software decision for your business today. That's capterra, C-A-P-T-E-R-R-A dot com slash majority. Capterra, software selection simplified. Reminder, you can support this program by going to join. Reminder, you can support this program by going to jointhemajorityreport.com. It's your support that makes this possible. We are launching tomorrow, the AM Quickie. It will be in your Majority Report feed. You don't have to do anything other than listen to it. Also, justcoffee.co op, fair trade coffee, tea, or chocolate, use the coupon code MAJORITY, get 10% off. Today is Tuesday, tonight is Tuesday night. That means The Michael Brooks Show.
Indeed. Tonight, we are talking about Hong Kong, we are talking about how standing rock movement turned into a push for local and state-owned banks. Then we have an activist who's joining us from the occupied Western Sahara, which Morocco's occupation, basically, that's the only sort of legally recognized occupation in the world besides Israel's occupation of Palestine, obviously. Then Emma Vigeland's in studio, and we're gonna have to revisit the Yang Gang, we're gonna have the definitive Marianne Williamson debate, talk about Iran, a whole bunch of other stuff. Michael Brooks Show, tonight, live at 7, patreon.com/tmbs. And the host of This is Hell, which is a legendary Chicago leftist radio show and now podcast, is gonna be joining us at the Chicago Live Show, August 24th at Lincoln Hall, so get your tickets, we'll see you there.
Oh, I've listened to his program many times.
I mean, he's a pretty impressive guy. He's been one of the original people in this whole space, so we're excited to have Chuck join us.
That's exciting. Matt, what's happening on Literary Hangover?
Yeah, we discussed the, the sort of median point between the Keynesian reformists and the Marxist revolutionaries by going through Rücker, Bregman's Utopia for Realists. We talk about how he trashed Tucker Carlson and Davos, and also Steven Pinker, so check that out, folks.
All right, see you in the fun half.
You are in for it.
All right, folks, 646-257-3920. See you in the fun half. Are you ready?
Who sent us this?
Alpha males are back, 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 and the alpha males are back, back.
Just as delicious as you could imagine.
The alpha males are back, 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 and the alpha males are back, back, back.
Just wanna degrade the white man.
Alpha males are back, back.
I take all of it in my throat.
Alpha males are back, 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 back.
Colm says what?
The alpha males are back, 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 back.
You are a madman.
And the alpha males are back, back, back.
I, I am a total cunt.
Can we bring back DJ Dannerkey's song, please?
Yeah, or a couple of them, just put them in rotation.
DJ Dannerkey.
Well, the problem with those is they're like 45 seconds long, so I don't know if they're enough of a break for people.
That's fucking nonsense.
Hey, folks, fucking reminder.
I do not have Parkinson's.
And the alpha males are.
Psych. Fuck, fuck, fuck them, fuck them.
Colm says what?
What, 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 what,[1066.82]
Incident. Number one, Laura, because God forbid you have to use force. You think that's funny, John?
It's probably worse for the people who are on the receiving end of it.
I'm not done talking. I'm not done talking.
Dan, we're going to hard break 10 seconds.
Secondly, you're probably going to get sued and lose your livelihood after you unfortunately had to use force against another human being. If John had served, he may know something about it.
All right, we'll check the numbers. We'll have you both back.
I'll beat it.
We got to do an.
Now, I'll tell you something. If Dan Bongino is reflective of a typical cop, then guess what?
That's metaphorical.
He just proved the case. That's why the guy should feel uncomfortable. He, Dan Bongino goes from zero to 60. This is a guy who can't keep his composure on a TV set. What would happen if he was actually in some type of situation where someone's life was on the line?
Listen to this guy.
Like say, for instance, he's a Secret Service agent.
Yeah.
Say he's a Secret Service agent, getting himself a latte.
You're resisting the argument.
Or a prostitute Cartagena. Just saying, just joking.
Wow.
I have expected Bongino to tell him to show him his hands.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. Man.
Sir, take care of that side of your pocket, sir.
Wow.
Put your hands on the table.
Laura Ingraham had to basically try and calm him down with like, we only got 10 seconds left. I wonder if that was one of those quick hooks, but well.
Man, Bong Bong was so upset.
Poor Dan Bongos. At least he's recovered better than Grant Stenchfield.
I don't even know who that is.
He's the other NRA TV guy.
There's a lot of talent there.
Call him from a 716 area code. Who's this? Where are you calling from?
Hello, this is Dakota. Hi, Sam.
Hi.
Yep, I'm a, I'm from Buffalo, New York.
What's on your mind?
Uh, I just kind of want to talk about a couple of issues, um, that I, I, as like a blue collar worker, you know, I kind of, there's some issues that Democrat, that the progressive platform has. Like I'm all for all, you know, the Medicare for all and whatnot and, you know, the free college. But the thing that more that has me concerned, especially for some of my, you know, some of my fellow people like me is, um, especially like, you know, in the Midwest and whatnot is like the gun control and not that I don't support it personally, you know what I mean?
Um, so you're, you're concerned that, um, uh, gun control policies.
It's gonna alienate.
Uh.
Alienate vote. A lot of blue collar workers, yeah.
Do you think that the Democratic proposals on gun control have changed in any material way from, let's say, 2012 to now?
Uh, not exactly, but the fervor over it has, you know, grown quite a bit in it. Like a lot of people I talked to, you know, cause I bounce around from terminals, I'm a truck driver. You know, like, like out in Ohio and Kentucky and whatnot, like a lot of them, you know, a lot of them are like, they support Bernie Sanders, like I'm, I'm a big Bernie supporter. But what has them nervous about it though is like, are they going to come after their, you know, maybe they have an AR 15 or whatever, you know what I mean?
Right. And do you think that this?
Really concerned to be people who.
Do you, do you get the sense that their, um, their fear comes from looking at the Democratic platforms or do you think that their fear comes from, uh, what they have been, uh, told by, let's say, the NRA?
See, that's what I'm not entirely sure about. I mean, they're really, I mean, besides, you know, in the debates, like I know, um, uh, what's his name, the, uh, one that just dropped out, um, Eric Falwell, or was it Eric Falwell?
Saul Well, yeah.
He, I, I know he was really rambling about that during the debates, the gun. That's all I've seen him want to talk about with gun control, it seems like.
Well, that was, yeah, that was the guy's whole platform, as Bernie said.
I mean, look, I think, I, I think, I guess my point is this, is that, uh, I think Democrats have, uh, lost already the people they're going to lose because of any type of gun control positions. And, um, I think that to walk away from any type of gun control positions would end up costing them more votes at this point than they would gain. And so, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I think maybe the, to the extent that there's any pickups that can be made amongst those people, I think it would have to come from the fact that like, um, we have policies that are going to help you and impact your life in a positive way, uh, and you're going to have to make a choice. A party that would, if they could, and they probably can't because of the Supreme Court, take away your AR 15, lets you continue to have your, your shotgun or, or your rifle, uh, but you're going to get healthcare for free at the point of service. Or if you're.
That's exactly what I tried to explain to them, you know?
If you're a truck worker, if you're a truck driver, um, we're going to, uh, make sure that you have a better opportunity to make, um, uh, benefits for your retirement. This whole thing where.
He's like one of the most.
They'll control what, uh, deliveries you've got to make, but call you a contractor. Um, they're stealing wages from you. I mean, there's a, there's a mul.
Like, um.
Go ahead.
Um, like now, I'm a car hauler, so I, I, I used to pick up at the Lordstown, Ohio plant all the time and we have, my company I work for is a terminal over there and a lot of, that terminal is actually looking to close down too. And, you know, a lot of those drivers, they're, I, I hear a lot of anti-Trump, you know, rhetoric going on over there, but I'm just not sure where they're actually going to turn though, you know what I mean? Cause there's, there's a lot of, cause you know, a lot of people, they are, you know, I mean, we're union workers, so a lot of them are, you know, very like fiscally, you know, um, liberal and, but, you know, being from the Midwest and whatnot, they're still kind of, they're still very socially conservative, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
You get where we're coming from?
Yeah, no, I get, I get you. I mean, I just don't know that those people, um, necessarily there's a lot of, I mean, look, you go fishing where the fish are, and I just don't know that there's a lot of fish there for Democrats, to be honest with you. I mean, I think, um, I think maybe, you know, uh, there can be a, a better job at trying to convince them that their material benefits are going to make their life, uh, better than, you know, uh, the threat that comes from the idea that, uh, women may be more empowered or that, um, uh, you know, different people who look differently than them may be empowered or, or whatnot. Um, but that, I just don't know. Let me just, my, my point is, is that like, look, you have, as a candidate, you, you, you cannot please all the people. And so you have to make a choice.
Absolutely.
You have to make a choice and, um, to, to try and dial back on social issues to attract people, uh, that otherwise that that's the reason why they're not voting for you, you know, uh, assumes that you can do that without alienating the people who vote for you now. And I'm not convinced that you can do that, frankly.
I'm doing my best to try to help, but you know, you only one man can only do so much, you know?
Exactly. Well, here's where you start. You tell them about the Majority Report app and I know a lot of these guys, um, you know, will get 4G for LTE in their trucks and you have them listen to the show every day. It's live. It's, we're killing two and a half hours for them.
Yep, that's, I'm listening to you on my phone right now.
Well, all right, well, I appreciate it.
Going to Philadelphia.
Tell, tell you.
And, um, one, one, one last other thing too, um, uh, you know, channeling with these guys and stuff like, up until, you know, last election cycle, I wasn't really into politics. Not only, not only have I gotten into politics now, I even managed to get my dad who, you know, more or less refused to participate in government, you know? And now my daddy is even donating to Bernie Sanders now, so.
Sweet.
You know, a voice like yours and Kyle Kalinsky and whatnot, that, you know, they can really add a lot of people to the base that, you know, people used to, you know, not have any outreach to because all this corporate media, you know?
Yeah, well, tell them, uh, tell, tell your buddies, you know, just give us one week. They listen to us for one week, I think they'll be hooked. Appreciate the call.
The only hope.
Thanks, man.
I appreciate it, thank you.
All right, drive safely.
Bye.
Right? We'll, uh, we'll cut out Kyle Kalinsky's, uh, name and, uh, post, right?
Yeah, I marked that on the timesheet.
Cut that out? Of course.
Also, we'll cut that out, this out as well.
Yeah, no, if we're going to cut out the instruction to cut out, uh.
All right, so let's start again. Three, two, one.
Great call. Great call. Oh, let's just, I, I just, I just need like, I need a palate cleanser. I'm so mad about Tom Steyer. Um, but let's talk about Jesse Waters too. Now, let's just get this up here because, um, yesterday we played a clip, Fox News in, um, where were they? Were they in, uh, in, in the UK?
France.
Oh, they were in France.
In Lyon.
Okay, they were in France, um, at a bar and they were covering, I guess expats watching the, the US, uh, women's team win the World Cup. And people started breaking out with like F Trump, F Trump, F Trump. And then apparently the clip went on, we didn't see the rest of that clip where they interviewed one or two of the people there who just explicitly were like, Trump is horrible. Go vote Democrats, whatever it was. And, um, this is, we mentioned this, that, uh, the, the, largely speaking, the, uh, women's, uh, soccer team has been very outspoken in their disdain for Donald Trump. And, uh, they have, they said, we're not interested in coming to the White House. And then the White House pretended like they hadn't invited them. And they are, um, trying to use their platform to push for pay parity. They want to get paid the same as the men's soccer team. And they're using this obviously as a metaphor for, you know, uh, women in society broadly. And Jesse Waters has a different measure for whether you should get equal pay. It's not just you're doing the same job or you're putting in as much time or you're doing it just as well. That's not, no, no. Jesse Waters will explain to you.
No matter what the sport, but the president does have a, have a point there. If you look at the World Cup men's revenue, it's in the billions and they split up the pot, uh, it's a much bigger pot. Women's World Cup revenue, much, much smaller, and they have a smaller pot to divide it up with, but he, the, the distinction is, is that the US Soccer Federation, the women do actually make more revenue and they get paid less, so that's their lawyer's fault. They negotiated a horrible deal and they need to renegotiate that immediately.
Yeah.
The point is though, is that the women are not helping their case by their behavior. If you go out and you disparage the president, you act in unpatriotic ways and then complain about not getting paid equally, well, what do you think's going to happen? People aren't going to watch.
No, but they get on talk shows.
Many, many people this weekend who said, I love soccer, I'm not watching the US women because I didn't like what they said. That means the ad revenue comes down, that means their overall revenue comes down and they can't dip you up the same amount of money.
Many people.
Many, many.
I wonder, I wonder if Jesse Waters knows that many people who, um, who are inclined to watch women's soccer and also don't, um, don't necessarily agree, aren't right wingers. Like, do you really think that Jesse Waters has any friends?
No.
Who are not exactly like Jesse Waters?
No, I was answering the first question, but yes. Follow up.
I love the idea that you need to be patriotic to get equal pay.
My, I, my, look, I haven't watched any of the World Cup this season, but I, I.
Because you don't like them disparaging Trump?
Because it's offensive. I mean, look, no matter who the president is, even if I have strong disagreements, you respect the office, god damn it. But I think, no, but I, I haven't seen, I, I think, I mean, especially outside of it, there is a Brooklyn bubble, so there's always people here that pretend they care about soccer and it's somewhat annoying. But I would say anecdotally that this year, this team is way more in the American culture than in previous World Cups.
I got news for you. I did not know.
I think it's a much bigger deal.
This is their fourth win? I had no idea.
Neither did I.
No idea.
No idea.
I think I was aware of one other win.
This, I think it's.
The Bernie Chastain win.
Yeah, I remember being a boy and seeing that and just, whoa.
That was a big event. That was a big event. Uh, but I, no, I, I think that they're doing quite well.
Yeah. I would bet that actually they're, they're at peak popularity. We could probably go on Google Trends and just find that out if people are more interested in them because they're speaking out. I mean, let's face it, there is probably more of a market for any sports franchise that is willing to dump on Donald Trump.
It certainly hasn't hurt the Golden State Warriors as an example, or most of the Patriot team, or any NBA team, or you can just do the list.
It's really untoward to do it as a woman, though.
I think, uh, showing respect to the president hasn't done Tiger Woods any favors, for instance.
Yeah, exactly.
I wish Jesse had thrown to his female co-hosts and get their thoughts on pay equity.
Whatever.
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, I don't care.
Whatever.
I don't care what Jesse does on that show.
So, uh, this is a good sign. I don't know if it goes far enough with Elizabeth Warren in terms of the question of Israel and Palestine, but it's headed in a better direction. She has recently, um, I think taken on a staffer from If Not Now When, uh, which is a, um, fairly progressive, uh, Jewish organization in fighting for Palestinian rights. Uh, but this moment is, uh, good. Had, at least, you know, trajectory wise, good for Elizabeth Warren. I think she's still significantly behind Bernie on, uh, this question in particular, um, and maybe more broadly in terms of, of foreign policy, but, um, a yes is better than a no in, in this, uh, in this exchange. Here she is, uh, If Not Now members in New Hampshire, um, approached, uh, Elizabeth Warren, uh, yesterday.
Hi, we're American Jews. We really love the way you're fighting corruption. We'd really love it if you also, um, pushed the Israeli government to end occupation.
Yes.
Excellent.
So I'm there.
Thank you.
So nice to meet you. Nice to see you. Here, let me get the milk.
I'm not convinced that wasn't, um, that was, uh, not just by chance. That gets out there. There was, I am headed to Net Roots Nation, uh, tomorrow. We're going to be broadcasting there live Thursday and Friday. You'll recall last year at Net Roots Nation, Cory Booker was, um, somebody came up with, somebody held up a sign, I can't remember what it said.
Was it a BDS sign?
It, well, I think it was a BDS sign and he had to disavow it after the fact. I don't think that that's what that, uh, moment was.
I just have to say, I don't think we actually covered it, but I mean, there was, Sanders was approached by the same group and actually held a Jews Against the Occupation sign. Uh, you know, look, when it comes to foreign policy, if that's something you're considering, there, there, again, it's not even just a, it's not even a question of, uh, a better, it's just a difference in kind. And I think like, you know, I think it is worth dredging up what Warren said about the assault on Gaza in 2014, which again was, I always say it was so brutal that Joe Scarborough criticized Israel shelling UN schools.
Right.
And she defended it unequivocally. She said, at the time, she said, I think we're going to just have to agree to disagree on this one and went on to talk about Hamas. But, and it's not only that, it's like Sanders actually condemned the killing of nonviolent protesters in Gaza several months ago. And I just think if you combine that with the Iran vote, the only senator to vote against Iran sanctions in 2017, and the Yemen work, as well as the willingness to vote against defense budgets, which she's voted for every single defense increase, probably because of Raytheon. Uh, again, I, I just think that component's not debatable. It's, it's nice to see, it's nice to see that step.
There's not, yeah, I don't think there's a debate in terms of where they're both are on foreign policy. It's just to the extent that I would like to see frankly, every Democratic presidential candidate trend in the right direction.
Sure.
That is a good sign.
I think Harris and Booker and my guess would be Biden right now are the, and Gillibrand to the extent she's relevant are the outliers in terms of even moving rhetorically.
Um, and it's good to see, I mean, you know, it'll be interesting to see if, if Warren taking a step in one direction will force the others to go in that direction too. Cause I don't think that they are terribly moved by where Bernie is at it, but I think yes, he's head and shoulders above. It is an apple, almost an apple's an orange, uh, oranges type of, uh.
I'm seeing someone sent me a screen cap. Thank you, TMBS Discord. And I guess this is showing me a Google Trends from July 2009 to, well, that's actually, excuse me, that's July 2018. Anyways, very strong increases for women's soccer.
There you go. Boom. Boom. Um, here's an exchange, uh, with Andrew Yang and Meghan McCain.
And we're pro Yang on this one.
Well, yes, with Meghan McCain.
Come on, it's Meghan McCain, worst person on earth.
Uh-oh, we just had a little bit of a crash there. Maybe that's why.
Too much energy.
Here, let's go into a, uh. Yeah, let's pick up a phone call. Calling from a 206 area code. Who's this? Where are you calling from?
Um, hi, this is Priya. I'm calling from Seattle.
Hi, Priya, what's on your mind?
Um, I was just calling because, um, sorry, I had the show planned sometime. Um, I was just calling about, uh, kind of this electability argument that everyone's kind of, um, putting forward in the, in the primary and, um, it's kind of, well, a couple things about it. The first thing that I was wondering if, uh, Bernie kind of being much more out front about being a democratic socialist and then having that be like the defining way that the media refers to him and often not using the democratic part, so just saying socialist, if that's hurting him because in the 2016 race, it was more of an outsider race, so, you know, having him not identify strictly as a Democrat might have been more helpful. And then also, um, just not knowing as much about him, having him not have such a defined profile, uh, they didn't have such a, you know, unified attack on that aspect of his candidacy. So I was wondering if you thought that that might be hurting him as opposed to just saying independent, because I feel like a lot of, you know, and then identifying certain policies as democratic socialist policies, but saying he himself is that, like, as a candidate, do you think that that could be hurting him at all? Because I was speaking to someone who's more of a centrist leaning and they were saying, well, you know, America's just not ready for a socialist and I feel like that could be hurting him a little bit.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll give you my opinion on that. And, and, and I felt this when he gave his speech about democratic socialism. Personally, I have always avoided, um, labeling, uh, myself as anything. Cause I have, you know, other than being of the left. Um, you know, it, it has become more important, it seems to people over the past couple of years, really the past two or three years, uh, than in the past. Personally, from a rhetorical standpoint, I don't see the value in it. It ends up being, um, and I think broadly speaking, whenever I have pitched anything to anybody or tried to convince them of anything, tried to sell them anything, um, I will avoid things that I have to explain and sell them on that are subsidiary to the actual product that I want to sell. So, um, to me, my opinion is that he would have been far better off rather than trying to explain to the country, sell to the country, the concept of democratic socialist, um, making it more about the policies these supports that I think are that much more beneficial to people.
I do think though, that, you know, you, you talk about his sort of honesty and his brand and I, I, I just think as a practical matter, he's been identified with those politics his entire public career. It would not be realistic and it would not look good.
I'm not saying that he's trying to run away from it.
Stop using that terminology.
No, I'm saying, well, I mean, he didn't use it as much during the 2016 race.
Actually, I mean, I don't know about that. He actually did use it quite a bit in 2016, but I think the argument was, was that just as he needed to talk more about his biography, he needed to articulate where he was coming from and if everybody else is going to use the term, define it for him himself, which is kind of like the other component of this conversation, which is that.
Doing that.
Well, which is the other reality, which is that, you know, Hickenlooper will be called a socialist if he's the nominee. So you might as well.
Exactly.
Define what it means in your terms.
But this is.
Which is completing the new deal.
Very different. It's very different than, than, it's very different. Because it's one thing to, to have someone say, you're a socialist and you say, well, if socialist means that I'm in favor of everyone having healthcare at the point of, uh, service and it's free, fine.
That's basically what he did in that speech. He said, if socialist means I support completing the new deal. And it means X, Y, and Z.
No, no.
That's, well.
Who asked him that question?
He's been asked that question in every single interview I've seen.
Now, he went out there to define democratic socialism. And I'm saying, why? Why, why not make it about the policies you're offering?
But I'm saying, cause it's his core brand, but I mean, it's just inescapable.
Michael and I disagree on this. He thinks it's helpful to go out there and lead with that he's a democratic socialist. I think it just confuses people.
I think you have to make an address and be clear where you're coming from, since that's what you're primarily identified with. Sorry?
How many people do you think heard that address?
I have no idea how many people heard that address.
Not many.
It's irrelevant.
So, um, I think it confuses people and that's my experience is that I think people, I, I mean, to the extent that people have said to me, I don't want to vote for Bernie Sanders, it is because they will say that as opposed to I'm against X, Y, or Z policies. And so I think that if I, if I.
But where are those people politically who've actually said that?
Like, uh, Democrats.
But like where?
Mainstream Democrats.
I don't, what does that mean?
Democrats who I think would probably agree with at least half of his policy prescriptions.
Okay, well, I mean, I've never heard anybody in that pool say that. I mean, half, that's, that's not that much.
I don't know.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, like, you're half, that's like a totally different political profile. It probably wouldn't be your first choice.
Well, um, so the, but that's, Michael disagrees.
Right, yeah, so I guess I fall more in line with Sam, but I actually had another thing is terms of electability argument, I was giving like policy after policy, why Biden wasn't like a great candidate and just, I said Biden's a good Biden and it's just going to be an issue, you know, because that's how I feel about him as a candidate, but, um, but by, and you know, the same centrist kind of, you know, just typical Democrat, like more institutional Democrat, um, he believes in all of Bernie's policies, but he has more of a kind of an institutional mindset in terms of who could get elected. And so my main argument that for what, some reason broke through to him, I don't know even if it's really that compelling, but for some reason it was, is that, um, why is, uh, Barack Obama not coming out more like, um, is it like, I know he's, he's not one to like, you know, tip the scale, so to speak, in favor of Biden, but like, does it look like he really thinks Biden is electable because we know the problems he saw with Hillary and I think he kind of has, um, has kind of spoken to that a little bit, not too explicitly, but at least, um, hinted at that about what he saw problems in Hillary's campaign and like everyone now is saying that we see a lot of the similarities in problems with Biden's campaign. And so, um, yeah, he gave him his list, basically, like that big master list, but e- especially with Busing being this big issue and Barack Obama and his relationship with people of color being like Biden's main selling point with the democratic base, why, when he's getting into it with Kamala, is he not, um, is, is there not at least some surrogate, like interaction or surrogate, like, um.
I, I look.
Kind of advocacy for Biden on that term?
I don't know.
And so my question is.
No, Priya, I think, I think, I think, listen, if you found that effective, then yes, it's effective. I mean, you know, that's the bottom line. I don't know, I don't know if, I have not seen any reporting that says that the Obama people are mad at Biden. There's some people who hang out, like you could say, like maybe those Pod Save America guys are a little bit Biden skeptical, which might be helpful because you could say that those are, uh, Trump, you know, those are Obama people. Um, and if it works, uh, with people like that, yes. And I would also say.
Certainly Trump thinks it's going to work.
And I would also say, I would also say that the other argument, if you, if you have to engage with folks at this point in terms of Biden's electability is, um, the more people get to know Biden, the more of a problem it's going to be. That was what the case was, you know, the two times that he ran before. And, uh, and on some level, you're, you're going to need some real differentiating factor between, uh, Trump and Biden and just, he, I, I, you know, I, I think saying that Biden's the more risky choice is, is going to be helpful, I think.
There's a clip of, of Trump already going around saying, making fun, I mean, it's a vintage clip, Trump clip. He's like, he says he doesn't want the endorsement, I think he wants the endorsement, but it's very strange, he won't endorse him. I mean, yeah, he's going to do tons of work with that.
Yeah.
They already are.
With Biden, his entire candidacy is based on like hugging Obama and Obama has seen like Trump's election as like kind of a personal insult and like a. kind of a personal insult and like a, you know, like, it's a terrible reflection of the country after having Obama to be electing Trump. And so you think if he's, if he's going to endorse a candidate who is running primarily on, you know, returning to the Obama legacy, restoring that and kind of just being a third term Obama, you'd think that if he thought Biden was electable, he, I mean, he's the most effective campaigner out there. He's going to win the democratic base easily. He doesn't even need to personally go out there. He just has Michelle go out and go on a few interviews and mention something. And every black female vote will be with Biden 100%.
Well, that's the thing.
I don't know about that. That's a little overstatement.
I think, well, I think, Priya, largely, I think, listen, my guess would be this. If Obama, Obama probably has a couple of scenarios as to when he would endorse Biden. And I suspect that they require Biden to win at least Iowa, uh, at least Iowa or New Hampshire. I suspect that if he wins both Iowa and New Hampshire, we will hear from Obama before South Carolina. I, I think that's possible. But I think if Biden doesn't win both of those, he will wait.
You're on your own for the first two, white boy.
But we'll see. I don't know. This is just a complete, that's complete speculation.
Conjecture.
Appreciate the call.
Sam Jecter. That's what we call it. Total Sam Jecter.
Oh, so, okay, let's talk about, uh, Andrew Yang here. Uh, he's on, uh, The View. And, you know, part of the problem with, and I don't know how early we're going to start this, but you know, she go, one of the hosts, who, who I like, I guess, to the extent that I like any View hosts, I don't watch it very much, Sunny, uh, what's her face? And, uh, she says, you know, are you for universal healthcare? Everybody's for universal healthcare. That just means everybody has, you know, well, the point is, nobody knows what it means.
Delaney says he's for it.
It could mean anything. I think the Republicans are for universal care, like access for everybody.
Free markets, baby.
Emergency room.
Right. And, um, nevertheless, all his answers are either, um, fine or, you know, general enough, nonspecific enough to answer. Uh, he was asked about impeachment. He says he needs to hear from the Mueller investigation, Mueller's testimony. Mueller's not going to testify for anything that's not in the, uh, report. And the report is enough. There's a lot of other reasons to impeach Donald Trump. Uh, but he sort of like says, well, I gotta wait to hear that. And then it's, you know, up to Congress, which yes, of course it is. Um, no one on the stage thought that you were a congressperson. They were asking you as your opinion as a presidential candidate, where you have some influence theoretically in a platform. That's, I mean, you're on The View, right? Um, but he goes on to, uh, have a proposal and Meghan McCain, she just can't wrap her head around it. She got to find something to have a problem with. She's in the middle of contract negotiations.
Closing the wealth gap, especially when it comes to the African-American community. Reparations a part of that?
Well, Martin Luther King championed a dividend for all Americans. I think that's where we should start. A thousand dollars a month for every American. And then reparations is a whole separate issue. Cause a thousand dollar dividend doesn't address the historical legacy of slavery.
Why should rich white people get ten, a thousand dollars a month?
Um, well, the, the great thing is that it'll remind them that they're still an American. But, um, but in Alaska, but in Alaska, they have a dividend.
No one at this table needs an extra thousand dollars a month.
But in Alaska, they have a dividend of a thousand dollar.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't feel, I wouldn't feel right. I mean, when there's still veterans on the street and,
You could give it away.
That's what you could use it for. That's what he means when he says it reminds you, you're an American. It doesn't, it's not just about what you do for yourself, it's what you do for other folks.
And in Alaska, they give the dividend to everyone in Alaska from the petroleum fund, one to $2,000 a year. And it depoliticizes it, it de-stigmatizes it. It's just everyone gets it. And so there's no, like, oh, you get it, I don't.
Right.
Immigration.
Pause it. Now, just say that the, obviously the, the best thing about the UBI is that it's a universal program and that it does theoretically de-politicize it. Um, and of course it has support on the left and right. The problem is, is that the, the support for it on the left and the right is different. And, um, that difference actually is, is part of the reason why what he said to Dave Rubin was so problematic. Now, I know Dave Rubin asked him the question. He didn't offer it. And he was saying it, I guess, to appeal to Dave Rubin, but he said it. I don't know, you know, he said that eventually he thinks it's going to, um, get rid of other aspects of our $600 billion social safety net. And I know, I know that people can choose to opt out if their particular benefits are less than a thousand dollars a month. Some instances they are. Of course, it's going to, for the same reason why the UBI is universal and becomes politically, less politically radioactive, the more you pull people out of these programs and leave the most vulnerable in them who require more than a thousand dollars a month because of their disability, because of, of whatever it is that they're, that, that places them in SSI, which can involve mental health, it can involve a whole host of different things. There, those programs become more vulnerable to politics. Because there's less people in there. They obviously become more expensive per capita, right, of individuals. Unless you start to cut back on these, uh, on the administration of it. So that, that's where the, the issues with the UBI has rolled out. And it's part of the reason why the right, elements of the right, Milton Friedman was hoping for a UBI because would begin to, um, dispose of that stuff. But this is not, I'm not here to criticize, uh, Andrew Yang's UBI policy, even though I guess I just did.
His, uh, not universal UBI policy.
But here is, here is, uh, where he gets it in with Meghan McCain, who just can't handle any of this.
I'm the son of immigrants myself. I think we need to create a path to citizenship, um, over the long term.
So you also have some unusual and I would say unorthodox, um, stances as well. You came out against circumcision, correct?
Well, you know, I think parents need to educate themselves on what the health information is. Um, you know, my, my wife and I obviously made a certain determination, uh, but it should be in the hands of the parents.
In the hands of what?
The parents. Parents, just.
Cause when you have a male baby, they just toss it on you.
Well, they tried to.
Pause it. That is, that is, that is Joy's way of saying, that was a dumb question, Meghan. But I know right now you're sensitive, so I'm not going to make fun of you for it. But go.
A male baby, they just toss it on you.
Well, they tried to.
They tried to just toss it on you.
Yeah, they tried to.
Um, you also believe in free marriage counseling?
Yeah, the, the data shows that if you grow up in a two-parent household, uh, certain outcomes are more likely. And so from a societal perspective, it makes perfect sense to try and keep couples together if they want to stay together.
So would that just be like a social worker for every couple in America?
Pause it. Can you imagine being unable to sort of wrap your head around the idea of free couples counseling? As opposed to mandated couples counseling? Can you imagine like sitting there and go like, oh, I've actually done some research on this and I'm just, I'm blown away. How is it possible to provide free couples counseling? Now, here's one way that you could assess this. How would it be possible to provide free counseling? How is it possible to provide free medical care?
I could imagine a plan.
Oh, it would be part of insurance.
The old insurance. I like, so first, because you're insulting my uncle, Joe Lieberman, with regards to circumcision and such. And now everybody's supposed to get marriage counseling by the federal government? That's like, that's like Aldous Huxley or whatever.
Imagine, obviously, like, sitting there with her team of, of advisors that she must have that are around her, the ones who are talking about, well, you know, we've read in her papers, like, Joy, you know, Meghan's really on the last straw there, whatever.
You mean like an agent and like some like bizarre husband that she no doubt terrorizes constantly?
Don't you think, don't you think her husband or her agent could say, oh yeah, that's probably just, uh, mandated in the health insurance?
I think her husband is more like, be like, Joy's a bitch. No, I'm sorry, honey. I have to look up some quotes to mine for my next piece.
Cause I just love like the complete like sense of like confusion that she has, like free couples counseling.
So every day, what would the ethnic background of this counselor be? Would they be Asian as well? I'm just going to ask that question.
Question is, um, you know, my, my wife and I obviously made a certain determination, uh, but it should be in the hands of the parents.
In the hands of what?
The parents.
Parents, just.
Cause when you have a male baby, they just toss it on you.
Well, they tried to.
They tried to just toss it on you.
Yeah, they tried to.
Um, you also believe in free marriage counseling?
Yeah, the, the data shows that if you grow up in a two-parent household, uh, certain outcomes are more likely. And so from a societal perspective, it makes perfect sense to try and keep couples together if they want to stay together.
So would that just be like a social worker for every couple in America?
Um, well, it'd be like, uh, marriage counseling, uh, you know, stipend essentially where it's like, if you decide to seek marriage counseling, then they can just go and get paid by,
My version of marriage counseling is drinking Jack Daniels, shooting some guns and hanging out. So like, my version is different than it. It works. No, just like going to a range. So I'm just saying like, this universal peg for every hole is always my problem with the left right now. There is not, every American is different. Every American does things in different ways. So I would say, I, I don't know. You also believe in staffing a White House?
Pause it, pause it, wait a second. So she thinks that it's mandated couples counseling?
Appointed.
Wait a second.
I don't want to sit with an Asian man who doesn't circumcise his kid, talking about my problems with my husband. All right? Thank you. If that makes me like a leper-tard or lep-leaper on this show, then like, so be it. Fuck you, Joy.
Also, her talking about her dealing with her most intimate personal problems with a gun is like a little disconcerting. Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as my husband and I drink enough, we stay together.
And hold guns.
As long as my husband that I wouldn't have married, gotten married to, except Trump's, uh, winning the election, just put me in a tizzy. That's, that's,
Now, I thought there was going to be like a nuclear war and such. Now I know that actually things are basically fine. My touch, my trust fund is not even going to be touched and people are really rude and my father, I might not even stay married. But now this gross Asian man wants to come and force there to be foreskin and marriage and Joy is here. And I may not get drunk.
You know she prepared the guns and whiskey line.
Oh, yeah.
Couldn't she have prepared the concept of like, hey, wait a second, what if this is not mandatory?
That sounded just as stupid in front of the mirror.
Exactly. And I love the audience reaction to it, which was just like, huh, that's weird. Huh. I mean, if you say that's the way that you go and have fun, but, uh, don't you have marriage problems? Like, are conservatives immune to having problems in their marriage and, and actually having to communicate about it?
Well, Sam, you're forgetting about the importance of Jesus Christ.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Hey, Sam, maybe Andrew Yang could have helped you.
Version of marriage counseling is drinking Jack Daniels, shooting some guns and hanging out. So like, my version is different than it. It works. No, just like going to a range. So I'm just saying like, this universal peg for every hole is always my problem with the left right now. There is not, every American is different. Every American does things in different ways. So I would say, I, I don't know. You also believe in staffing a White House psychologist?
Yeah, that's an idea.
That's a good one.
That seems like a good idea.
I'm not mad at that one. That's fine.
Oh, good. Well, we need to de-stigmatize mental health issues in this country generally. Uh, and so if we have a psychologist in the White House, I thought it was a good idea before the current administration.
Do you think that he's capable of even doing such a thing?
You know what? It doesn't even matter.
Yang is good here. He's exactly right. Should be de-stigmatized. That's right. Also, uh, sitcom idea. Andrew Yang as a marriage counselor mandated by the state, Andrew Yang is not president, Bernie Sanders is president and part of a sweeping healthcare bill. There is, uh, it's only mandatory in domino in Meghan McCain's case. Andrew Yang does the treatment. They're locked in the middle of the woods with no alcohol. Let the therapy commence.
There you go.
I would love to watch that show. They forget sitcom, let's make it a reality show.
Uh, going to the IMs, CT Leftist, um, CT Mike, the media headlines indicate a feud between Nancy Pelosi and AOC and other House freshman about their vote against the border bill. Pelosi's good friend Rosa Delorio, uh, voted against the law too. Is this another contrived narrative by the media or something more complicated? Um, I, I would imagine it's both on some level. I, I don't understand why Pelosi would do this. I mean, if she doesn't have the, the sophistication to know that Maureen Dowd is going to, uh, try and stoke this type of fire, then, you know, she hasn't learned anything in, in her decades-long, decades of, of being a congresswoman. So I don't know. I think there's something to it, but, um, I don't know how important it is, other than, um, it being indicative of a larger problem that the democratic leadership has. Brock from Virginia, after Epstein got his initial money, the source of the rest of his money seems to be very vague. Yes, there is, um, there is a, well, yesterday they found tapes supposedly that said, young blank with blank, which suggests that it's a young blank with another person.
Yeah, these were CDs inside a safe.
And there has been some speculation that perhaps he has blackmail material on people. There's also been a lot of confusion and questioning as to where this guy made his money. He was a hedge fund guy. As you know, hedge funders get two, uh, two and 20 or two and four, up to two and 40, which is 2% of all the money they manage, plus 20% sometimes 30%, sometimes 40% of the gains that they make. And you should also know that because of the carried interest loophole, the interest that they pay on that is less than you pay on your wages. Here, um, just thought you should know that you're in the wrong business. But his money came out of, seemingly out of nowhere. And there is conjecture and speculation that in the process of his trafficking and essentially pimping girls to, uh, co-conspirators, that he may have also been in a position to leverage what he had just done to get maybe some other billionaires or people who are not, you know, he was not a billionaire at this time, to say like, hey, let me manage your money. You know, the whole two and 20? Let's call it more like five and 30 or 10 and 30. And if you do enough of those, well, then you've got a billion dollars. Uh, but people don't know. I suspect we will hear more about this as time goes on. Smoot Court. Ezra Klein had a great two-hour conversation with Rod Dreher. Oh, he was the, um, Rod Dreher was the, uh, like the crun- crunchy conservative or something like that? Rod very reasonably and extendedly explained his ideas that being gay or trans is unnatural and illegal immigrant children have overrun public schools. I'm going to give these some real thought. It's not like Ezra challenged anything Rod said in a meaningful way.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I wouldn't expect that conversation to be very good.
Wow.
Dreher's gross.
JB, guest suggestion, Tom Steyer. What is views on education? Does he want to implement a wealth tax? Is the concept of retirement outdated? Perhaps he could grant endowments to Pro Impeachment Podcast. I mean, all right, let's just go through this. Like, I feel like we could actually do a 24-hour marathon where all we do is talk about the different things that Tom Steyer could do with that hundred million dollars. That would not only be more positive than running for president, we could dedicate like 18 hours to what he could, or maybe 22 hours to what he could do that would be more positive with that hundred million dollars. Just using every one of his platforms, if, you know, he planks on his platform if he puts it out.
You should be tweeting that. I just want, really quick, you should be tweeting it in a respectful way at the campaign account. I, I, earlier I didn't add him, but you can. I said, look, give Andrew Gillum 20 million dollars in Florida. I mean, he should be inundated with the literally millions of more positive things he could do.
Yes. And then I would take the other two hours of that 24-hour marathon to talk about how detrimental his spending a hundred million dollars in this campaign is going to be, just in terms of like the negative impacts. I don't know if he thinks he's doing a message campaign or if he thinks he's going to win, but there's no point in his message. And he's got no business being president. But this guy could go in and turn two, maybe three states' legislatures with a hundred million dollars. He could, he could possibly win the Senate back for Democrats with a hundred million dollars. He could, He could start a campaign to get the next president of the United States, if he's a Democrat or she's a Democrat, to stack the Supreme Court. I mean, there's so many things that he could do with $100 million to promote fighting climate change. That would be, you know, this is just a classic case of either a guy who is just so unbelievably narcissistic that he cannot see literally like beyond his own nose. Or a guy who is so narcissistic that he's surrounded with people who can't see beyond their own wallet. Here is Tom introducing himself to America as a presidential candidate. We're not going to get through the whole thing because it's, it's frankly like, it is.
It's exhausting.
It's a perfectly non-offensive television ad that would cause no one to do anything other than note that they had just watched it. And I don't even know that that effect would last more than like 20 minutes.
Tom Steyer, one of the most influential activists in Democratic Party politics.
He's the founder and president of Next Gen America.
I think what people believe is that the system has left them. I think people believe that the corporations have bought the democracy.
Pause it. The moment they do that Dutch angle, that side angle is when you know that this is all just about, it's just about like people, consultants lining their pockets, spreading the cash around to other people who will give them jobs in the future. This, this, that's the dead giveaway right there.
Corporations have bought the democracy that the politicians don't care about or respect them. Don't put them first, are not working for them, but are actually working for the people who have rigged the system. Really what we're doing is trying to make democracy work by pushing power down to the people.
California voters are getting a chance to do what California lawmakers fail to do.
Prop 56 got a lot of support at the polls.
The oil company sponsored a new ballot initiative to hold California's new law.
I was born in 1957. I grew up right in the middle of the Civil Rights Revolution and the Vietnam War. The underlying injustice in America was coming under attack. My father graduated from Yale Law School at 21, started being a lawyer. Then he went into the Navy because of Pearl Harbor. And then at the end of the war, they sent him over to be assistant to the chief prosecutor. I think my father looked at being in the service or being at Nuremberg is like, you have your duty, you do it. My parents were very uncompromising about doing the right thing.
Steyer and his wife are worth an estimated billion and a half dollars. They've pledged to give half of their fortune to charity.
We signed the giving pledge, which is a promise to give away half of your wealth while you're alive to good causes. We have a society that's very unequal and it's really important for people to understand that this society is connected. If this is a banana republic with a few very, very rich people and everybody else living in misery, that's a failure. The lawyers have basically gotten the Supreme Court to say that corporations are people and therefore they have all the rights in the constitution given to people. Now, obviously corporations don't have hearts or souls or futures. They don't have children. They have a short timeframe and they really care about just making money. If you give them the unlimited ability to participate in politics, it will skew everything because they only care about profits. You know, you look at climate change, that is people who are saying, we'd rather make money than save the world. That's an amazing statement and it's happening today and there are politicians supporting that. I mean, I think 82,000 people died last year of drug overdoses. If you think about the drug companies, the banks screwing people on their mortgages. It's thousands of people doing what they're paid to do. Almost every single major intractable problem, at the back of it, you see a big money interest.
So I endorse Bernie Sanders.
Well, exactly. Like, why wouldn't you go out and, you know, how does he not find a candidate who is not saying that in this campaign? Like, why does it have to be him? And why does he, it's just, look, he can spend his money any way he wants, but it will be detrimental to getting rid of Donald Trump.
Hi, this is Tom Steyer's dad. I always insisted on doing right, as you said in that ad. And this campaign is wrong, son.
Yeah, the one that matters is me. I'm the only one that matters.
Exactly. Do you see how you sound like him, even though you hate him so much? Tom, this is your father. It's a very selfish and reckless move. We all want to be the top gun and run for president, but there's other more constructive things to do. Thank you. We still do Seder up here.
Exactly. Jeez, it's really just enraging. It's just enraging. This guy could be a hero. He could be a multiple hero. He could be, he could be protecting Larry Krasner from having his power stripped away as a district attorney. He could be flipping state houses. He could be coming up with a strategy for fighting gerrymandering. He could also just be investing and electing progressives to the House. He could run, isn't, isn't there a Senate seat opening up in California? I'm even willing to give him a friggin' Senate seat. It's unbelievable.
It is insane, the delusional, and it's even more, you know, it's even more infuriating is that for somebody who's just like very existence as a billionaire should not be as a billionaire, not as a person, obviously, but as a billionaire, he does seem like the nice type. And it's even more mad at him. I mean, look, say what you will, I mean, somebody pointed this out, plenty of people have been pointing me out. You know, the Koch brothers. I mean, my God, these total sociopaths who strategically deploy their money.
Well, to be fair, one of them, I can't remember if it was Charles or David, ran for, bought himself a libertarian ticket. Yeah. And he realized like, you got that out of his system. Right. And he's like, okay, now I know what I just gotta do. I just gotta, I don't need to be the guy. I just need to be the, the money.
Son, in 1980, one of the Koch brothers ran for president as his old quest of narcissistic wish fulfillment.
Why do they come out and say 100, 100 million? You got a billion. Why don't you drop 200 million, you cheap bastard? Like honestly, like you're, like, this is the thing I don't, I don't-
I don't believe we're in that deep of a crisis.
Listen, I know it's a crisis. But I'm not going to spend one fifth of my, of my fortune. That's gonna leave me with only 800 billion, 800 million dollars, and I promised to give 400 of that away. Okay, now we're in 400-
Yeah, now we're, now all of a sudden, we're like Mitt Romney, all of a sudden here, now we're just getting pathetic.
400 million. I mean, just look at this barn that I'm in. Here, go ahead, pop it up here. This barn. This barn.
Stopping.
Look at this barn here. This barn I'm in, where we shop this, okay? This barn, I know, look, okay, I had this barn redone. And that was like $850,000. So now I'm down to 399 in terms of million. And there, my boat, like, there's a ton of stuff. 200, no. I'll tell you what I'm gonna do, 105 million.
Tom, this is your mother. This is the wrong thing to do. Your father always insisted on doing the right thing and this is wrong. You can help that very nice man Eric Holder help with the district redistricting efforts, Tom.
Did either you hear, and I'm not sure if this is entirely accurate, but I thought I heard something about, he was trying to decide if he should run and his wife didn't want him to run. Did you hear anything about this?
No.
Oh, okay. Well-
Listen to your wife, Tom.
The wife.
Well, you know, I am suspect of all of it. You know, the stories that the wife doesn't want, want him to run, like, yeah, my, listen, my family doesn't want me to do this, but I've gotta do it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, this is-
I think in Beto's case, my wife really didn't want that to happen.
Right.
She foresaw that I was gonna make a complete asshole of myself.
The Chris Lepaco, do you think there are concentration camps we don't know about yet? I think it's conceivable that there are facilities that, that are there that, certainly there are ones that haven't been sort of, I think, toured, I think. I'm not exactly sure how that happens, actually, to be honest with you. Doe Link, people need to wait, watch The Brainwashing of My Dad in which Sam appears, it could blast people out of complacency. So frightening. I think I interviewed the woman who did that too. Did we do it on the show?
Uh, Ring of Fire.
Uh, Ring of Fire. Algorithmic, basing unfair algorithm. I was so excited for an MR Quickie this morning. I looked and looked and pop up a majority reports YouTube channel. When I couldn't find it, I just broke down, almost settled for some stale Morning Joe because I was so thirsty for a fresh cup of hot cedar. Pelosi is, Pelosi is, Pelosi is alt, is all right, alt-right.
Pelosi's all right.
Who worried we should be, who worried should we be about the Senate? No Senate equals no Medicare for all. We have multiple seats that we have to win, Colorado, Arizona.
We're not just an economy, we're a culture.
Scroll Fight, can you clip the Ronald Reagan call from Monday? You guys covered a lot of good stuff quickly in that call. Let's do it.
We clipped it.
Oh, we did. Okay. Wooden Computers, did you guys see the YouTube show Some More News? Deep dive on why Ben Shapiro shouldn't be taken seriously. It's around an hour long and everyone should watch.
It's so good.
Yeah, I think I started to dig into that. JJ Cool, have you guys seen the drama between Trump and the UK ambassador to the US? Of course, anyone would be crazy not to describe the Trump administration in similar terms, but it's pretty funny. Trump basically confirms every single accusation in his response. Did you hear about this? There was a leak of a cable from a British diplomat back to Downing Street, I think. And it said, yeah, these guys unfit, completely disarrayed.
It's been shambolic and there's no indication it will change.
Yes.
I think he was actually the British ambassador to Washington. I mean, it's not just like a diplomat, like the ambassador.
Complete excrement show.
What's really funny is watching the British politicians have to say like, of course, we disagree.
Ronald Reagan, one of the best ways people can help in our current political climate is to share this show with family and friends. It might sound corny, but my wife and I have started listening to the show together in the afternoon. We call it our afternoon delight. Can't wait for the morning.
Nice.
Can't wait for the morning quickie, going to really spice things up for us. Sometimes we don't have time for that slow afternoon buildup to the fun half. Something quick and to the point is definitely my style. Jesus. Dave Rubin's one star preview, one star preview. What do you mean I have to be awake for 3 AM for this? Yeah, no, I love it. Keep up the great work, you guys. Spare a thought for the poor Aussies that are drowning in neoliberal policy. Hoping our shitty apartments don't fall on us while these shitheads use Australian taxpayers' money to build stuff like pipelines for fucking sand. Yes, sand. At least the rising number of homeless will have nice beaches to enjoy, but the last thing. You see, I've tried to leave Yelp reviews for the company that used to clepe cement for the foundation of this building. For the Yelp page, I've been blocked by Dave, so I can't ask, should I try instead? Maybe you guys could ask me. All right, I can't quite follow some of that. Rocky Mountain Radical, I have been a carpenter for 18 years and I've known less than a handful of tradespeople missing digits. The most memorable, a guy who lost part of a finger ripping paint sticks and a table saw. It's the table saws that'll do it. And I've always been told like whenever you can use a jig saw on site as opposed to a, what do you call it, circular saw.
My dad's got one of those table saws that has the thing where it senses if your thumb hits the blade and it sends a brake that automatically slams the circular saw and stuff.
Really? I didn't even know they had that.
Yeah, they, they sample it by putting a hot dog into it and it actually just stops the blade before it cuts you much.
How, how?
I can pull something up.
Wow, I didn't know. My table saw, I have a plastic thing on top and I'm just super, super, super careful.
My dad severed two of his fingers almost entirely with a butter knife trying to cut frozen hot dogs.
With a butter knife?
Jesus.
How do you do that?
I cut my finger on a deli slicer. I had a job at a, at like a meat counter. Meat counter at like a supermarket in Somerville.
Union?
Was it a union job? No, a small supermarket.
Coming right up, Mr. Cretopolis.
Let's see this thing.
That's right. We're going to use a salty, wet, conductive, all beef frank.
So I'll hold it just like it was my thumb. You gotta be kidding me. Let's see it. There's nothing. That is amazing. That really is. I mean, that's a-
It didn't even cut it?
It never happened.
Wow, is that, oh, is that because of electricity?
Electric, electric conductivity.
Oh.
It's like a touchscreen.
That's awesome. That sounds like an expensive saw.
Yeah. He treated himself with that. Some others did.
I now have a new goal. Damn, yeah, exactly. Keep Sam's fingers. I now am in love with a, with my, I have like a, I think it's a five or six inch blade circular saw. And I, that is my new favorite tool. Elsie, if Bongo gets that angry over calmly presented facts, just imagine how scary and probably violent of a police officer he must have been.
Secret Service agent.
And then the Secret Service accepted him, which says concerning things about the Secret Service's standards. Teacher Lauren, hey, Sam, great interview today. For anyone interested, I want to recommend the documentary Backpack Full of Cash. It's very revealing when it comes to charters and why people are so willing to dump money into pro charter board candidates. Zero Gravitas, Sam, a big project on the left is trying to activate non-voters. The caller was absolutely right that talking about banning assault weapons absolutely pushes people otherwise drawn in by left economic policy. I don't see the Democrats losing votes to Republicans by not pushing this issue. Well, I mean, I think the idea is it's gonna come up. I think that, I think that there is a, I don't think that there's many candidates who lead with that. Eric Swalwell sounded like he did, but in the main, I don't think there's many candidates that lead with it because for most voters, I think it's probably lower on the list of things that motivate their vote. You may have 80% of the population who are in favor of gun control, but the 20% who are not are far more, vote more often on that issue. That's the, the point. And so not making it the focus of your campaign is different from changing your policies on it, I think. And I think there's something to be said about not leading with that because I just, from electoral standpoint, I don't know why you need to. I don't know how that helps you. I just don't think it gets you any votes. I wouldn't, I wouldn't back off it because I think it can lose you votes in that instance. All right, let's take one more phone call and then we've got a lot of people have been hanging on for a long time on here. I'm sorry, folks. A lot of people on for 80 minutes almost. What happened? I'm gonna figure this out here. Just bear with me. Call from a 314 area code. Who's this? Where are you calling from? You are the final caller of the day.
Hello, Sam. It's good to talk to you again. I really enjoyed our previous interview and I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce a new plank on my platform. As you know, not everyone knows my history. I do not often talk about it because I am focused on winning this campaign. But what you may not know-
Oh, wait a second. Are you doing an impression?
My root chakra, Sam. Yes.
Yeah, that was not gonna be the last call of the day.
I have no idea who he was trying to be.
Who's he trying to do?
I have no clue. I-
That was a tough deal. Tough. That was a tough deal.
Call from a 516 area code. Who's this? Where are you calling from?
Hello, is this me?
Yeah, it's you. Are you trying to do an impression of somebody?
Low energy.
Oh, fuck that. Um, so I was working on Destiny's video last week. And you're saying-
Wait, wait, I can't, I can't hear you. You gotta talk into your, whatever device you're using.
Well, my phone. Um, so I was working on Destiny's video last week. We're talking about, um, you don't get to do, you don't get to do what you want.
Dude, 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 what kind of phone are you using? Do you talk to other people with this phone?
Yeah, you can't hear me?
Okay, now I can. Whatever you were doing before, don't do. Do what you just did when you said, yeah, you can't hear me. Go ahead.
Oh, my bad. I wasn't doing anything. I'm just saying.
Is this, is this a comedy bit? Is this a comedy bit? Are you doing a comedy? Are you doing a comedy bit? Talk into the mic, the phone.
I wish, um, um, so I heard, I heard you on Destiny's channel.
Yeah.
Saying that you, um, saying that you don't get to do what you want to do on your show. Like, I guess you're beholden to the news cycle or whatever, right?
Uh, well, no, I did express, I mean, that's a little bit of an exaggeration, but, um, the idea of doing a, um,
I don't get to do what I want in my own show.
No, uh.
Yeah, exactly. So Michael, um,
The idea of doing
You get to talk about.
A once a week show.
You talk about reggae and Elmo.
Right.
Nas.
Right, no, I don't want to talk about that. But the idea of doing a once a week show, doing a once a week show is, is obviously appealing. I mean, shows now, they do once a week. Maybe they do, you know, they, they produce two on one. It's, yeah, it gives you a lot more time to, to prep.
You get to play video games and talk to people all day, Destiny. That seems fun too. I don't get to do what I want.
What's that?
I'd be jealous if I was you.
Yeah, all right, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Also, um, I would just want to ask Michael, what is favorite song on Elmatic was?
I didn't hear, was that for me?
Yeah.
Favorite song on Elmatic?
We don't have time for that question.
Life's a bitch.
All right.
That was an amazing call.
Yeah, he hung on for a long time.
I like, that is a great example of, of try less, you'll have more success.
Yeah, barely speaking the microphone.
Barely speaking to the phone and ask a vaguely obnoxious question.
All right, here's.
About an interview post people haven't seen.
Six, um, six more IMs. Inner Bangs, I suggest Democrats advocate for bringing back the so-called assault weapons ban. Advocate for common sense background checks, potentially advertise strictly voluntarily substantial federal gun buyback. Aside from that, let's institute Bernie's America will find that gun violence will plummet. Uh, democratic socialism confuses Sam. Bernie Sanders confuses Sam. Sam, please don't speak for everyone and let Priya have her second question. Sorry, I was totally angered by Sam's response to the Priya phone call. Forgive latest message. Pablo, I had a dream where Russell Brand was driving Michael and I threw some strange seats and it was supposed to be Portugal.
Russell Brand can't drive.
Sounds good.
This is my fourth dream with Michael. I love him. Uh, Erasian Workers Party. Erasian? Majority Report taking a page from the Camel cigarettes playbook by offering a seven day challenge. Uh, Faroute Milky Way, why not treat guns the same way we treat vehicles? Register every weapon competency. Well, I know, I agree with this. Prime, hey, Sam, and I was listening to Kyle and you should spread the framing. Uh, I was listening to Kyle and you should spread the framing on Medicare for All. You would eliminate your private tax for healthcare, premiums, deductibles, copay and pay a public tax. So that way your taxes won't increase, but actually decrease, um, from moving your private healthcare tax to a public tax. Thank you and left his best. What's that?
You should follow, you should follow Kyle's lead in saying that, Sam. We've been saying that IMR, that's the point. That was the point.
Oh, I don't know if he was saying that we were saying this and Kyle should spread it.
He was saying that Kyle's saying this and you should take a page out of his book for once.
Whatever. All right, Jen, uh, Tempe is part of the Phoenix metropolitan area. Remember that Phoenix cops did to the family of four-year-old who took a Barbie, uh, from a dollar store? We do. Yeah. And the final IM of the day. Secret identity politics, the thing Jesse Waters said was possibly the least true thing I've ever heard. See you. Well, uh, Michael will be here tomorrow. We'll be live from, uh, NetRoots on Thursday and Friday. Bye-bye.